Councilmember Head, President, Councilmember Ramsey, President, Councilmember Pedro, President, Councilmember Gideon, President. We have seven members. We have approval.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will have the invocation this morning by one of our own team members and Pastor of the Kingdom Truth Ministry, Pastor Jocelyn M. Ruffin.
Let's all bow our heads. Most gracious and eternal Father, we thank you. We bow before you, Lord God, we come declaring who you are. Father God, you are the Lord of lords and the King of kings. And Father, we give you glory on this day, for this is the day that you have made. For let us rejoice and be glad, there in we thank you, Father, for this gathering. Father God of people, Father God to come before you, Lord, to counsel, to administer the work of the city of New Orleans. Praying, lift up all of our councilmembers, oh Father God, whom you have divinely selected, oh Father God, to handle the city's business. We know, Father God, that whom you've chosen, Father God, you've chosen a wonderful group of people, Father God, to do the work of the city. And we lift them up before you today, Father God, as they come together and decide the matters of the business of the city. We thank you for their not for your knowledge, for your understanding, and for your wisdom. Father God, help them, oh Father God, to do, to be great leaders, oh Father God, and do what you've called them to do. Help them, help them, Father God, to walk in the way of righteousness, to be kind and grateful and gracious to the people of the city of New Orleans, oh Father God. We're praying, Father God, even for them, Lord God, as they orchestrate everything that you've put before them. Lord God, let them walk in the way of righteousness, oh Father God, and in true justice, oh Father God, concerning every matter that's before them. Lord God, let there be no favoritism, but Father God, let everything be justly and rightly in the name of Jesus. And we give you praise for every person that is under the sound of my voice. Father God, I don't know what everybody is dealing with today, but Father, we pray that you would grant peace. We pray, Father God, that there would be great decision-making on today concerning the city of New Orleans. We thank you for such a great city, Father. And we decree that you are God over this city, Father God, and that everything that we say and do today will bring you glory. We ask that you would have free rein and free course, in Jesus' name, and that you would grant peace to every person's heart. We speak these and many other blessings in the mind in the name of Jesus Christ that we pray, and the people of God respond by saying, "Amen."
Amen. Amen. Thank you, Pastor Ruffin. I will be led by the pledge of allegiance by our partner today and our partner for the next four years across the hall. Madam Lele, may it control.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the routine of justice for all.
We have approval of the minutes, January 11th, 2018, and January 25th, 2018.
Moved to approve the minutes, second by Councilmember Rosette. All favor.
We have a special order of business. The first order of business is a presentation. The Advocacy Center of Louisiana, Ron Lasapenta Naylor, Director of Litigation, and Sarah Boyd, Director of Legal Services. On the occasion of their 41st anniversary, the Advocacy Center of Louisiana will present before the council regarding free legal services provided to citizens throughout Louisiana, including the elderly, disabled, and those in need of human rights protection, et cetera. We need to suspend the rules to add this order of business to the agenda.
Rules to suspend the rules, second by Councilmember Gray. All favor. The rules are suspended, yes.
And now we begin presenting.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Ron Laspanato and Ms. Sarah Boyd, for being here with us today. I know that you have a PowerPoint, so I will give only a short introduction. But I want to thank the Advocacy Center for the incredible work it does. It's really the only organization I know of in the city that does the kind of work that you do and serves our seniors and our citizens with disabilities so thoroughly and so well. And so I want to thank you for 41. I meant to have you on here last year for 40, but 41 is good years. And I will say that I make it a priority to attend the annual fundraising luncheon at the Odd and Tea Room that you all have done every year for so long. And I'm always so impressed and amazed, and not only by your supporters, but by your, your presentation of the work that you do. So please let us have that, and if you want to say what your positions are, and et cetera.
Sure. Yeah, my name is Ron Laspanato. I'm the Litigation Director and the Executive Director currently. As pointed out, the Advocacy Center has had a presence in New Orleans for 41 years. In fact, New Orleans is its main office. We also have offices in Baton Rouge, Lafayette. Our core services that we provide, legal and other advocacy services to persons with disabilities and elderly services. And I want to introduce, to my right, is Sarah Boyd, who is the Legal Director. And just as an overview, I'm going to give a brief overview of what the Advocacy Center does. We then will show a brief video that shows some of the work that we've done in the past. And then we'll have Sarah and I be available to answer any of your questions. The Advocacy Center is really part of a nationwide system of protection and advocacy programs. We've been funded since the mid-1970s to provide legal advocacy to persons with disabilities. There's one in every state. In fact, there are territories with protection and advocacy program in some of the territories. For example, in the Virgin Islands and Guam, other areas. Our services address a broad range of issues which relate to or arise out of a person's disability. So we don't just do any kind of legal work. For example, we don't get divorced. But for us to get involved in the case, it has to be something that specifically relates to a disability or to a person having legal needs because they are elderly. And because our, the demand for our services really upstrips our resources, we've set priorities. So there are some cases, even though they might arise because of the disability, because of our priorities, we won't be able to do it. And we just simply couldn't do every case that were called upon to address. Some of the issues we deal with are special education, disability discrimination in many forms, exclusion from employment, public services, you name it, we get involved in it. We represent a fair number of people in institutions, mental health facilities, nursing homes, developmental services facilities, prisons, jails. We do fair housing care, which is just another form of, you know, where there's discrimination on the basis of disability. We do a lot of ADA accessibility and barrier removal representation. And we represent people around getting public benefits, particularly Medicaid and other health services that will allow them to either remain in their home or to obtain their own home. So that we're really trying to, I mean, I think that one of the, one of our focuses is on integrating persons with disabilities and allowing them to have the same benefits and privileges that everybody in the community have. So with that sort of background in mind, we have a short video. In fact, it's 11 minutes to be precise.
In two seconds.
In two seconds. And they will be able to answer your questions.
...to live his own life, to make both big and small decisions, and to be respected for the decision he's made. Everyone wants to feel empowered. What keeps people from being empowered? Not understanding the importance of setting goals. Not having the confidence in our ability to reach those goals. Not having the knowledge, skills, and tools needed to realize them. The Advocacy Center seeks to empower every person who needs our help. When we help them find their own voice, we've really done our job. Because just maybe, the next time that person has a problem or a crisis, he or she just may be able to resolve the situation without us. In this video, you'll meet three people the Advocacy Center helped in the past year. We helped them find their voices, and now they're writing their own stories.
Irene is 48 years old. Her disability is a mild intellectual disability. Irene lived in a house, in a small house, and it had 14 people living in the house, five of which were children under the age of six.
I didn't like the pain they were doing. Because Mama took me my car, my boot, my car, and going spending it buying groceries for her, right? And now let me have nothing.
In addition, there had been some violence in the home, and it was a pretty difficult situation. She was very shy, and she was very withdrawn, and she was very frightened. But I have to say that she had incredible strength to be able to tell a room full of almost strangers that she wanted to get out, and that she wanted to move on her own, and she wanted our help in doing so.
I told them that. They went to town, everything, treat them. I want to put my foot down, and I must run now.
I believe that through our efforts, the combined efforts of Irene and the Advocacy Center, we made such an impression upon the rest of the team. They certainly understood the urgency of the matter, and they replied almost within 24 hours of the request. Some of her family members actually did not allow her to move out. The sheriff's deputy had to go along with several of members of the team to remove her from the home.
Listen, I tell me to then go to a safe place where it's nice and quiet when it's raining.
So we actually helped Irene move into this apartment. The provider was wonderful about securing some furniture for her and some household items. She also was able to keep her job that she enjoyed very much. And she was able to, then began to learn how to actually budget her funds. And for the first time ever, she was able to go out and spend her money as she chose to spend it.
It's a way that I have to pay my man. Pay my paper bill, pay my life bill. And now I'm trying to save some money and go out of town for the summer.
She is an amazing person to have come from where she was to where she is now. And she has incredible inner strength to be able to be the person that she has become.
I met A.J. probably 2008, 2009. He lived in Agrippa, and I would visit him regularly as an ombudsman. And at that time, he was telling me how much he wanted to move out on his own and, you know, live his life. A.J. has cerebral palsy, and he has a mild cognitive disability. Did I tell you that this was going to be your house? When A.J.'s mother passed, we learned that there was a trust fund for him and also property. Relatives who had not been around didn't feel that he was able to manage his affairs or to make decisions. A.J. said, you know, "I, that's my house. It will all be mine. I want to move back into my home." With that, we were able to stop everything that was happening. The trust was not going to be turned over into somebody else's name. It went into a special needs trust. His house was put into the trust to protect it. We met as a team with all the parties involved and explained to them that A.J. has a confident nature. He knows what he wants.
You helped build the house?
Yeah.
Has a lot of special memories for you, doesn't it?
Yeah.
At that time, there was another resident house, Mr. Teddy, who had moved in. And A.J. and Teddy had really become friends, good friends. It was almost a comical scene visiting them. One would tell a joke, they'd want to finish it, or, you know, they were just two peas in a pod.
I love to go gamble.
Well, Mr. Teddy wanted to move out. Okay, well, let's, let's check, you know, are you, you know, what kind of supports can we get? What kind of waivers should we want? Unfortunately, Mr. Teddy's name was a long way on the waiting list. I had contacted the regional office to find out, you know, what can we do? A.J. has a house. He got his waiver. He wants Teddy to live with him. How do we make this happen?
I thought he was kidding me. He said he wanted to live with me. And I didn't think him up there, boy. Took Katie, said, "Teddy, do you want to get up off me?" Then after a while, she couldn't buy me up off me. So she said, "Why don't you do my A.J.?" But that's fine. And we've been having a beautiful time.
He might talk a little different than the rest of us, or a little slower, which a lot of times is a good thing. Sometimes we just need to slow down and listen, and listen to what he wants. And, and A.J. lives in his own house, and he's able to dictate his life the way he sees fit.
Oh, my God. Damn.
I'll take that back. And you too.
Mackenzie was born with a chromosome genetic disorder. It's called partial trisomy 12q and monosomy 22q. It's extremely rare. She was the 13th case in the nation. And basically, everything has to be done. Oh, she's not physically able to do for herself, as well as not capable of speaking. She does make sounds and facial expressions, so we kind of know what she's saying too.
Mackenzie Wells was a teenager with severe disabilities that required round-the-clock care and truly heroic measures by her family to make sure that she got the care she really needed.
We spoke with the pediatrician about having some nursing service to come into the home. We tried to get 30 hours. Well, we only got 21. We tried to go for 40. Well, they finally gave us 30. When trying to basically get 40, we kind of applied for 56. They still didn't want to get us the 30 hours. Well, then they finally come up and said, "Okay, we'll give you 40." By this time, I had gotten in touch with the Advocacy Center.
The states required to give her an explanation of why she didn't get what she asked for. And there was the notice from the Department of Health and Hospitals was just purely, it was invalid. It did not give the information she was entitled to by law. But we did offer them the opportunity, if they were willing to go to federal court with us, representing Mackenzie and people in her situation. And that way, we'd be able to help more people.
There was no question about doing it. It's, it's an MVS. Because we've been there. We know what it's like.
So we filed the case, and almost immediately, the Department of Health and Hospitals took another look at it and, and could tell that her services needed to be increased to the amount recommended by her doctor. But we didn't even have to have a hearing on it. The department immediately complied and approved those services.
Having the nurses here, it's a blessing. They help so much with what they do. If they hadn't been for the Advocacy Center, we wouldn't have the nurses here. The Advocacy Center is, is a wonderful thing to know that they're there to help people like us. I mean, we try to do everything that we can for our daughter to have as much of a normal life as possible. I couldn't ask for a better group to work with.
You've heard three stories about remarkable people who were not content with the status quo. They sought to change their lives, and they did. They are our heroes.
So we'd be more than happy to answer any questions. I thought, just as a little background, waiver services that they're referring to are waivers of the Medicaid program. They've been around since, I think, the mid-'80s. And they really allow for an array of services to persons with disabilities. And the main goal of those services is really allow them to live in the community or to even obtain community-based placement. So it's a really important service that the state provides. And over the years, we found ourselves embroiled in a lot of legal issues when they're trying to cut back on those services and not appropriately administer them. So the references that you have, the waivers, that's what that's about.
Mr. Laspanato, isn't it true that it costs less to take care of a person at home than it does in a facility?
Significantly less. It's thousands of dollars less. And, and I think that that's, I think, you know, so it's sort of a win-win situation. People get to be integrated into the community at a lesser cost than if they had been in an institution.
And the waiver is a waiver that allows them to go from being in a facility or home to, to being independent?
That's correct. That's correct.
It would seem that since it costs less to pay for them to be independent, it would be more of an automatic thing to allow people to be independent.
I agree.
So it's really, it almost sounds like the government is backing, you know, holding up the nursing home and medical facility companies.
The waivers really are a move in the right direction. But you're right, they definitely could be, that, that, rather than, rather than being in the community being the waiver, it has to be the other way around.
That's what it seems to me. Right. Right. Well, very good. Very good. Any, any questions or comments down the road here? Everybody good?
Just thank you for your advocacy. I mean, these are situations where I know you wouldn't see the big firm or the small firm having the capacity to jump in. And, you know, the dignity that you're giving back to these folks is truly amazing.
Thank you. Don't you, yeah, we have a proclamation for you. I'll read it real quickly here. Whereas the City Council takes great pride in recognizing those individuals, institutions, and organizations who are dedicated to the city of New Orleans. And whereas the Advocacy Center was organized in 1977 to protect, empower, and advocate for the rights of persons with disabilities in Louisiana, in Louisiana, and seniors in New Orleans. And whereas for 41 years, the Advocacy Center has sought to advocate for people in three major ways. Through direct one-on-one representation, through systems advocacy, changing the systems that serve people with disabilities and seniors, and through education and training so that people are capable of advocating for their own rights. And whereas, starting with a budget of $64,000 and a staff of four and one office in New Orleans, the Advocacy Center has grown to an agency with a budget of $3.8 million and a staff of 54 who work out of offices in New Orleans, Baton Rouge, and Lafayette, and out-of-field officers, offices throughout the state. And whereas, we, New Orleans City Council, commend the Advocacy Center for their tireless efforts, commitment, and hard work in protecting and advocating for the rights of thousands of people with disabilities in Louisiana and seniors living in New Orleans. Therefore, we proclaim that the Council of the City of New Orleans recognizes the Advocacy Center for its work. Thank you. Take a photograph.
We have the consent agenda. A communication from Forrest Bradley Wright, Alliance for Affordable Energy, Document Number UD-1705. This should be marked received. We have a communication from Carrie R. Turner, Partner, Keen Miller LLP, Attorneys at Law, CNO Document UD-1705. This should be marked received. A communication from Jeffrey T. Catton, President, Gulf States Renewable Energy Interest Risk Association, Document Number 1705. This should be marked received. On page four, a communication from Tima B. Johnson, Executive Assistant, New Orleans Redevelopment Authority. This should be marked received. A communication from Joan Palmerville, Association, AIA, Executive Director, AIA New Orleans, Document Number UD-1705. This should be marked received. A communication from Gary E. Huntley, Vice President, Regulatory Interrogations, New Orleans, Inc., Resolution R-1152, R-1731, R-17176, R-17177, UD-0802. This should be marked received. On page five, a communication from Edward Haran, Zoning Administrative Department of Safety and Permits, Neighborhood Conservation District Advisory Committee Chair. This should be marked received. A communication from Edward Haran, Zoning Administrative Department of Safety and Permits, Neighborhood Conservation District Advisory Committee Chair. This should be marked received. The suggested hearing date is February 22nd. On page six, we have a communication from Gary E. Huntley, Vice President, Regulatory Affairs, Interrogations, New Orleans, LLC, CNO Document UD-1704. This should be marked received. A communication from Timothy S. Craig, Assistant General Counsel, Legal Services, Regulatory Interrogation Services, Inc., CNO Document UD-1604. This should be marked received. A communication from Forrest Bradley Wright, Alliance for Affordable Energy, UD-0802. This should be marked received. On page seven, a communication from Lisa M. Hudson, Director of Personnel, City of New Orleans, Department of City Civil Service, the Hiring Range for Mass for Meter Services Division in the Sewage and Water Board. This should be marked received and referred to the Budget Committee. A communication from Denise Rodrick, Environmental Project Specialist, Public Participation Group, State of Louisiana Department of Environmental Quality Environmental Services. Andrews Street, sixteen oh seven through sixteen oh nine Reverend John Raphael Junior Way, twenty-three oh five through twenty-three twenty-one Felicity Street, and twenty-three twenty through twenty-three twenty-four Torpside Court Street. The zoning docket eighty-three seventeen. We have ordinance calendar number thirty-two thousand one thirty by Councilmember Cantrell, two thousand one through twenty-eleven Beenville Avenue, zoning docket one oh five seventeen. On top of page twelve, we have ordinance calendar number thirty-two thousand one thirty-three by Councilmember Cantrell, one forty-four El Place and one forty-five South Rampart Street, zoning docket one oh two seventeen. We have ordinance calendar number thirty-two thousand one thirty-four by Councilmember Pedri, two fourteen, two fourteen through two eighteen Robert E. Lee Boulevard, zoning docket ninety-two seventeen. On top of page thirteen, ordinance calendar number thirty-two thousand one thirty-five is being taken off of the consent agenda and deferred to February twenty-second. We have ordinance calendar number thirty-two thousand one thirty-six by Councilmember Guidry, zoning docket ninety-seven seventeen. On top of page fourteen, we have ordinance calendar number thirty-two thousand one forty-six by Councilmembers Head, Brissette, Cantrell, Guidry, and Williams by request. The Budget Committee recommended approval. Ordnance calendar number thirty-two thousand one forty-seven by Councilmembers Head, Brissette, Cantrell, Guidry, and Williams by request. Budget Committee recommended approval. On top of page fifteen, ordinance calendar number thirty-two thousand one fifty-seven by Councilmembers Head, Williams, Guidry, Cantrell, and Brissette by request. The Budget Committee recommended approval. Resolution R eighteen thirty-six by Councilmembers Williams, Head, Guidry, Brissette, and Gray, docket number UD eighteen oh one. The Utility Cable, Telecommunications, and Technology Committee recommended approval. On page sixteen, resolution R eighteen thirty-seven by Councilmembers Williams, Head, Guidry, Brissette, and Gray, docket number UD sixteen oh four. The Utility Cable, Telecommunications, and Technology Committee recommended approval. Resolution R eighteen thirty-eight by Councilmembers Williams, Head, Guidry, Brissette, and Gray, adopted. Utility Cable, Telecommunications, and Technology Committee recommended approval. We have motion M eighteen thirty-nine by Councilmember Head by request. The questionnaire was received. Governmental Affairs Committee recommended approval. On top of page seventeen, we have motion eighteen forty by Councilmember Head by request. The questionnaire was received. Governmental Affairs Committee recommended approval. Motion M eighteen forty-three by Councilmember Brissette. We have motion M eighteen forty-four by Councilmember Gray. On top of page eighteen, we have motion M eighteen forty-five by Councilmember Cantrell. Those are all the matters on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I would entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda, but before we get to a vote, we do have one public comment card on the consent agenda. Steve Kennedy?
Good morning, Mr. Kennedy. First time in the dress shop on the side of water. I guess one of the things that I wanted to kind of bring up was calendar number thirty-two one forty-six. I didn't have a chance to make the meeting, but in meetings that I don't make, I always watch every single meeting that goes on, community meetings included. One of the discussions that I was watching at that budget meeting in regards to calendar number thirty-one forty-six, and the discussion that I heard, it was talking about the urge just in case the government calls for a special session in order to kind of close the building out again that the state have. And I think that's a legitimate reason, you know, to want to have the city lobbyists in place in order to advocate, you know, on behalf of the city interest, in order to protect the city interest. That's of the utmost importance. What I, the concern that I have is about the process. I remember last week, you know, last council meeting, I saw like the high heated debate that kind of had, that went on for a resolution that was passed that I thought was important. And so, one of the concerns that I have, you know, with this is that, the reason why I bring this up is because I competed for this contract last year. I didn't have an opportunity to win, but I still had an opportunity to compete. And I lost myself, my firm, competing against a firm, and we didn't win. And I was cool with that. I love competition, and if I win sometimes, I win. And if I lose, sometimes I lose, and I'm okay with that. However, if we have, you know, contracting opportunities and opportunities to compete, I think that if we knew, if the administration knew that, you know, this potential issue was going to come up, I think that prior to that, then I think a proposal, our repeat should have been put out and say, hey, you know, we want to be in place so we can have opportu, folks can have opportunities to compete, you know, on this particular matter. Because one of the concern that it raises for me is, you know, we have like a public competing bid process, then this basically negates the public bid process in a sense. And, you know, so I'm not trying to hammer this administration. Like I say, I like some of those guys and gals that work in administrations, but this don't have nothing to do with life. This has something to do with process and being fair and open. Like, I think that most of you all are open, and I think that you all, as a council, believe in that. And so, I will hope that, you know, issues like this going forward, we don't have to wait until, you know, to try to put a matter like this on a consent agenda. That it should be open for, you know, public debate and public discussion. Because everybody, I'm sure, all the citizens of New Orleans want the city to be protected at the state legislature. That's of the utmost importance to all the citizens of New Orleans. We want that. However, opportunities like this shouldn't be going about missed, because I wanted to see like who was the DBE partner of this. You know, I lobbied on behalf of the city for free on monuments and other different issues that was at the state legislature for free, zero. I was spending my own money driving to Baton Rouge on all those days of just going up there speaking of issues that I thought was important for the city of New Orleans. So, I just wanted to bring that to you all's attention and make sure that this council is aware. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Kennedy. Can someone from the administration come up? Miss Spears, I see you said, Mr. Branson up there. He just got across the sea. I mean, he might not even have the answer.
I'm not sending him.
I just came from across the ocean, it's on the sacrificial land.
The ocean and the river, a lot of water.
I crossed the high rise.
Okay. Get some water. What say you all about why, to Mr. Kennedy's concern and discussion with regards to a change of course from going from a bid process to this? I'm just like, you all about a change of course?
There are a couple things. One, as I mentioned during the Governmental Affairs Committee meeting last week, particularly for the local contracts, we wanted to make sure we had our lobbyists in place in case a special session was called. And I think you all aren't aware, the governor has been intimating that a special session will be needed. The contracts that are at issue today are the same firms that have represented us for at least the last year, if not longer, and have an understanding of the issues before facing the city as well as what's happening, both in the local legislature as well as in DC.
What do you have this, is that, and this is an ongoing thing even prior to my former retirement, it is a joint contract with a number of different public entities. It is also the Aviation Board, I believe it is the City of New Orleans Board, RTA, that what we've done is pooled the resources together, all those, and the firm represents all of the agencies, not just the city of New Orleans.
What firm is it, Miss Spears?
So, it's Patton Boggs at the, in DC, and it's Southern Strategies in Baton Rouge.
And then, did they go through a bid process earlier or no?
For the last contract, I believe they went through the bid process and were awarded the.
And then that contract ended?
Yeah, it was a one.
It's a one-year contract, so you're getting this annual.
Annual renewal.
Renewal. Well, I don't know if it's a renewal, but it's an appropriation, it's an annual appropriation.
Well, what was the thought behind doing an extension, given the short time that this administration's on right now?
Let me see this, and I can't answer that question because I don't know that there is a contract per se as the ordinance is just a budget ordinance. Again, I mean, I do not know. But this is a budget ordinance to put the funds in place, as I read it, in order to issue a contract or to go out on a contract, or whatever that process is.
So, it may still, it might go out of bid?
As I read the ordinance, yes, I cannot answer if all that's been done, but as I read the ordinance, it is merely a budget ordinance.
Yeah, I can speak to our part in that. We're just moving the money. The way the administration chooses to issue the contract is their decision according to the law that they have to follow. But all we're doing is saying, okay, executive branch, we want you to have the money to be able to do what you need to do to protect us at the state and federal level.
And we can give you that answer separately, but again, as I'm saying right now, and I'm sure the answer exists, I just don't know what it is.
It might be I'm calling, maybe you're calling, yeah?
No comment.
I know you watch it, you're sometimes too. So, that hasn't been decided yet, is it?
I can't answer that. I don't know that. I don't want to mislead the body to make the fact that I had that answer to you. We can find out that answer, but I'm saying for this purpose, it's merely a money, for the ordinance to put money in place, because we will have to do it. I can't tell where we are in that process of selection right now.
Kennedy, would you all share that with us?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
For terms of comment.
I have, Councilor Gray has a question. Of course, this does not affect our rules about DBE participation, so, well, there's a contract in place now, one that's going to be put in place, it is subject to the rules that we passed about DBE participation. Is that correct?
Absolutely.
Do you know what was done with the old contract last year with this group? And did we get reports from them on their DBE participation?
I believe the DBE participant, I know locally, it was Jade Brown Russell that represented us in the state legislature.
Okay. If you can get for us the information about their compliance with the rules that are in place last year, and you've already given us assurances that the rules are the rules, so they're obligated by law to follow the rules on DBE participation for this year, when and if the contract is issued? Okay.
Right, and it's an extension, and Southern Strategies is the DBE that is a part of this, and the extension is through December thirty-one of twenty eighteen. But it is to keep the lobbyists in place, not only through the end of this current mayoral term, but to ensure that they're in place throughout the entire year of twenty eighteen. But it's consistent with the contract that was in place last year. However, it is an extension, and to my knowledge, it's not going to be, and the mayor has the authority to extend the contract for one year. That doesn't have to come through the New Orleans City Council. That's my understanding right now, but we'll get more information.
Thank you all very much. I would move to adopt the consent agenda. Is it a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Gray, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 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 six, six ayes, no nays, or one abstentions?
We're now on top of page.
Councilwoman Guidry, an abstention for that.
We're now on top of page nineteen. We have the Legislative Group in Tax Abatement, the Report of Councilman District B, submitting the Mayor's Office of Economic Development's recommendation of approval of the restoration tax abatement request for eight thirty-nine Jackson Avenue, Cornelius Payne. We have resolution R eighteen forty-one by Councilmember Cantrell approving the participation of municipal address eight thirty-nine Jackson Avenue owned by Cornelius Payne in the Property Tax Abatement Program, twenty fifteen dash thirteen eighty-two.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This project restored a former funeral home which had sat vacant for thirty years into four units and two bedrooms plus two baths. The committee supported approval, therefore I'm making a motion to approve. Second. It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? So, the ayes have the motion here, it's thank you.
We're now on top of page twenty. We have the Legislative Group in Tax Abatement, Report of Councilman District B, submitting the Mayor's Office of Economic Development's recommendation of no recommendation, obstination of the restoration tax abatement request for fifty-two oh two Chestnut Street, Walker Site. We have resolution R eighteen forty-two by Councilmember Cantrell approving the participation of municipal address fifty-two oh two Chestnut Street owned by Walker Site in the Property Tax Abatement Program, twenty sixteen dash fourteen seventy.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This property owner converted and restored a shotgun double into a single-family residence that he and his family currently live in, owner occupied. It comes to this body with no recommendation, simply because the committee abstained initially from the vote because they wanted to receive a legal opinion about an affidavit. So, that's why it's coming with no recommendation. However, the legal department has since provided guidance that the project has met full compliance with all of the requirements. And I have an email from Tracy Jackson representing the administration stating that based on the legal determinations, the committee would certainly approve this matter. So, with that, I'm moving for approval. Second. I have a motion, I mean, I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? So, the ayes have the motion here, it's thank you.
We're now on top of page twenty. We have the Legislative Group in Tax Abatement, Report of Councilman District B, submitting the Mayor's Office of Economic Development's recommendation of no recommendation, obstination of the restoration tax abatement request for fifty-two oh two Chestnut Street, Walker Site. We have resolution R eighteen forty-two by Councilmember Cantrell approving the participation of municipal address fifty-two oh two Chestnut Street owned by Walker Site in the Property Tax Abatement Program, twenty sixteen dash fourteen seventy.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This property owner converted and restored a shotgun double into a single-family residence that he and his family currently live in, owner occupied. It comes to this body with no recommendation, simply because the committee abstained initially from the vote because they wanted to receive a legal opinion about an affidavit. So, that's why it's coming with no recommendation. However, the legal department has since provided guidance that the project has met full compliance with all of the requirements. And I have an email from Tracy Jackson representing the administration stating that based on the legal determinations, the committee would certainly approve this matter. So, with that, I'm moving for approval. Second. I have a motion, I mean, I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? So, the ayes have the motion here, it's thank you.
We're now on top of page twenty-two, I mean, twenty-one. We have the NCDAC of Edward Haran, thirty twenty-eight thirty Barone Street. This has been deferred to February twenty-second. We have the NCDAC of Edward Haran, Zoning Administrator, Department of Safety and Permits, Neighborhood Conservation District Advisory Committee Chair, requesting council action regarding the Neighborhood Conservation District Advisory Committee's decision of denial on an application for demolition permit for the following, seventeen thirty-nine North Dupree Street. The property owner is requesting a fee reduction and/or waiver of the post-demolition fee of four thousand three hundred thirty-five dollars, which is fifteen percent of the building value of twenty-eight thousand nine hundred. It has seven yeas and three nays.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Excuse me. I move to uphold the denial.
Second motion.
Second by Councilmember Gray, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Ayes have it. Motion, denial is approved.
The NCDAC of Edward Haran, twenty-seven twelve St. Anthony Street has been deferred to February twenty-second. The NCDAC of Edward Haran, sixteen hundred Robinson Blake's Senior Drive has been deferred to February twenty-second. On top of page twenty-three, the HDLC appeal of Brian J. Gill has been deferred to February twenty-second. We have the HDLC appeal of Chad Maury, requesting to appeal the historic district landlord's commission of a ten thousand dollar fine for property located at thirty twenty-seven St. Anne Street.
Mr. Perkins?
Thank you. Thirty twenty-seven St. Anne Street was a contributing rated four bay Eastlake-style double shotgun located in partial control portion of the Estimé Bridge local historic district. On June twenty-second, twenty sixteen, the New Orleans HDLC sent the owner, record Carmen Wibel, a letter regarding existing violations on the building, including but not limited to demolition of all but the front twelve feet of the structure. At that time, at the time of the citation, the building was for sale by the owner. On July twelfth, twenty sixteen, the owner submitted an after-effect demolition application to the Department of Safety and Permits and the HDLC. The owner stated that the rear portion of the building was eighty percent damaged due to determinate infestation was a threat to public safety. As a result, they removed the rear portion of the deteriorated building without permission. The HDLC issued a certificate of appropriateness for the demolition and indicated that the front portion of the building was to remain and be rehabilitated. Mainland LLC purchased the residence two weeks later, and Chad Maury is listed as an officer of Mainland LLC. On May twenty-third, Christian Keller applied to renovate the building and construct a thirteen, one thousand three hundred and fifty-two square foot addition as per plans that were submitted along with the application. The HDLC reviewed the drawings and issued a certificate of review for that day for the proposed work. The drawings clearly indicated the portions of the historic building that were to be retained. On December twelfth, twenty seventeen, HDLC and City Department of Safety and Permits inspectors posted stop work orders on the property. The inspectors found that the applicant had demolished everything but the front wall of the building. In addition, the bottom portion of the remaining facade had been removed as well. On December fifteenth, Chris, what am I? Applied to the HDLC for retention of the demolition and deviation of the approved drawings. The matter went before the commission at their January fourth, twenty eighteen, meeting. At that time, the commissioners reviewed the timeline events, photos of the structure prior to the demolition, the applicant's reasoning for performing unpermitted work beyond the scope of the building permit and certificate of review. The commission agreed that once it became clear that what remained of the original building could not be salvaged, as indicated on the approved plans, the owner or contractor should have returned to the city to procure the proper permits to demolish the building. Commissioner Devoney made a motion to approve the retention of the demolition, provided that the facade is reconstructed and levy a fine of ten dozen dollars. The motion passed unanimously.
All right, thank you very much. And we have the owner here, Chad Maury. If he would like to come up and speak, and then we'll have more to say about it. I have photographs up here, and I think Mr. Maury has photographs also. Yes, please.
Good morning. I moved in this neighborhood in October of twenty thirteen. I walk by this property at thirty twenty-seven St. Anne two times a day, seven days a week with my dogs, as it's only one block from my current residence. The owner's originally knocked down the majority of his house post Katrina. The report's been exposed to elements for over ten years, rotting, termite damage, and vegetation. This is hands down the most blighted property in a half-mile radius. I purchased the property in August of twenty sixteen. Shortly after purchase, I was to appear for a hearing for blighted property for an inspection that occurred before I owned the property. I was five minutes late to a ten-minute window and wasn't able to speak to the board. Therefore, judgment code enforcement lien was handed down to me. After speaking to members of City Hall, they told me they would reduce my fine from over five thousand dollars if I followed through with my plan to develop the property and to do so in a timely manner. After multiple bids on the project, I signed my first contract with my contractor, who later ran me through to wringer for not only money but for time. I was able to terminate that contract then, but this started me back to square one. At the same time, I lost my job, therefore I had to get a cosigner for my construction loan. All this was just adding more time to my limited window from the city's timeline. After a few more bids, I signed yet another contract with my current contractor. My intentions were to property and develop a house that is as close to as possible was already there. Even though my neighborhood is a partially controlled HDLC neighborhood, I want to use for the most part fully controlled guidelines such as wood-clad windows on the front facade, the original pediments, corbels and decorative stoppings fence from wrinkles, three scales on the gable, and the same two-and-a-half-inch lap panel reveal on the front facade. Why I'm here today is because my contractor decided to knock down the existing side walls of the structure without a demo permit. I did not know he was going to do this. The only thing he told me was that the sides were severely rotted and were no good. The next day, they were gone. The pictures I presented show some of the damage and rot from the ten-plus years of exposure to elements. Today, I stand before you, stuck between a rock and a hard place, not only financially, but more important for me at the time, as I mentioned earlier with the code enforcement lien. Knowing my contractor will not pay this fine, I will be stuck to burden this financial commitment. If he doesn't, it'll turn into another lien against my property. And to be honest, I'm quite embarrassed. This is my first renovation house, and all I wanted to do were the ins and outs of the business and maybe down the road, make a career out of it as a GC myself. One of the main reasons I decided to move in this neighborhood is because I love the home here and have a lot of respect for the integrity of their history. All I'm trying to do is clean up my neighborhood and get this blighted property back to respectful and beautiful ownership. Thank you.
Thank you. So the fine that the HDLC had recommended was ten thousand dollars, which is their maximum, and I am going to move to reduce the fine to two thousand dollars based on the facts. As the owner stated, he lives down the street. He dreamed of getting this property that was just, it looks like you could do nothing but tear it down to begin with, and fixing it up. And he finally was able to do that after months of trying to get a hold. He had to go through succession with a family with a lot of people. He was very excited about bringing this house back. He was ripped off by his first contractor, and then his contractor that he had now went beyond the scope of the approved work because obviously there was a whole lot of damage to the property. Was going to keep the contractor, was going to keep the facade, but then he cut the bottom of the facade off to raid, to do the base elevation, the base flood elevation, and so that ruined the facade. And meanwhile, back at the ranch, a lien appeared on the house from the previous owner, from the blight of the previous owner, and that he's working with the city on that's over four thousand dollars. So I just feel that he was trying to do everything right, and he's just, it unfortunately has not worked out for him, and I frankly feel that his contractor is obligated to pay this fine, so I will reduce it, I recommend reducing it to two thousand dollars.
I'm in complete agreement with that, with that, Counselor McGidry. Not just because I'm partial to his haircut, but I, I, I'm very partial to his story. I remember when I renovated my first house and I got ripped off the first time. You want to believe what people tell you. You see work they've done in the past, and you assume that you're going to get the same quality from those other jobs. So I'm not, my hat goes off to him for making this effort to, my hat? But, you know, I'm thankful for your commitment to the city and your effort here, and I think ten thousand dollars would only exacerbate the problem and make it tougher for you to invest in the property.
I agree. I just have a question in regards to the code enforcement lien that's currently on the property as well. Is that correct?
Yes.
So you have to pay that, and then in addition, this two thousand dollars? And he's working with the code enforcement folks to bring that down, but when they, you know, agreed to work with him on it, part of it was doing a timeline to get this house renovated. Now, this house cannot be renovated. It's going to have to be demolished, or what's left of it. And so, you know, that's something that he's going to have to renegotiate with code enforcement, and then he's going to also have to renegotiate with the people who are doing the financing. And it's really a bad situation, and again, I think that his current contractor is totally responsible, as between him and his contractor. I shouldn't be putting my attorney hat on, but I'm reeling out at these people.
Counselor McGidry, how much is that code enforcement?
The code enforcement lien is four thousand one hundred and fifty-five, and they were offering to bring it down to two thousand.
About sixty-five.
Just maybe down to about sixty-five. Okay, so, so, we're concurring with one or two, but not a majority of. They asked that the recommendation may be considered, given everything that's happened, and that we simply recommend that there be no fine for this, for this issue. I'd still, I'd still like to have my way with your contractor. What I think about what they did in cutting the facade of this and ruining the possibility that we could build a house around that facade, but, okay. So I will recommend that there be no fine as to this property, given the circumstances. We have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Very good. Thank you, Counselor McGidry. You know, she is a woman of steel. This is a great thing.
She believes in pro bono work, her license is expanding, so maybe she'll call her.
I am a retired recovering attorney.
Thank you very much, Counselor.
At the bottom of the page, we have zoning doc at ninety-four seventeen Michael Sherman, requesting a text amendment to Article seventeen of the Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance to make timeshare permitted use in the CBD one, CBD two, CBD three, and CBD four districts on CBD one, CBD two, CBD three, and CBD four districts. The recommendation of the City Planning Commission being for approval.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, Mr. Crowe.
Good morning. This is a text amendment to the zoning ordinance that would reclassify timeshares from a conditional use to a permitted use in those four central business district, districts that were just listed. Timeshares are really comparable to a few uses that are already permitted uses in those districts. Hotels are permitted use, hostels are permitted use, commercial short-term rentals are permitted use. So given the comparable status to those other uses, the planning commission doesn't find that there's a need to regulate this further through the conditional use process and recommends approval of reclassifying timeshares as permitted uses in those four districts.
Thank you, Mr. Crowe, and changing this from conditional use would also just remove unnecessary processes that people would have to go through. So I do agree with the City Planning Commission, and I'm moving for approval.
Sir.
I have a motion and second by Councilman Gray. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? So the ayes have the motion here. Thank you.
We're on top of page twenty-four. We have zoning doc, God bless you. One oh six seventeen Royal Cosmopolitan dot LC, requesting a text amendment to the Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance to Article seventeen, section seventeen point four point eight point two, figure seventeen dash two, to change the maximum building height designation from D seventy feet to G one hundred and twenty feet on square sixty-six, lot twenty-six, in the second municipal district bounded by Royal, Canal, Bourbon, and Iverville Streets. Municipal addresses one twenty-one through one twenty-three Royal Street. The recommendation of the City Planning Commission being for no legal majority.
So this is a amendment to the zoning ordinance that would change the boundary that's between two parts of Central Business District that have different height limits. Along Canal Street for properties, essentially a half-block between Iverville and Canal Street, facing Canal Street, there's a height limit of one hundred and twenty feet. On the other side of that boundary, so including the half-block nearest Iverville Street, and then going farther into the quarter, the height limit goes down to seventy feet. And so the intention of this boundary is to have larger multi-story buildings along Canal Street, and then to gradually step down in height as you enter the quarter. This application would shift the boundary slightly in the direction of Iverville Street so that it captures one more lot located at one twenty-one Royal Street. That block is developed with the historic five-story hotel building constructed in eighteen ninety-two by locally renowned architect Thomas Sully. And so what this would do is increase the height limit at that location from seventy feet, and the structure's actually eighty-two feet, so it's over that height limit by twelve feet currently, to one twenty feet, so it would add additional thirty-eight feet of total height. So that would allow up to about three stories of additional floor, additional floors. And so the planning commission staff objected to this because essentially the intent here was to draw the line down the middle of the block. This lot is virtually in the middle of the block. It's slightly closer to Iverville Street, but the structure itself more closely aligns with the seventy-foot height limit. And so, you know, the decision was made as part of the draft of the zoning ordinance to stick it within the lower height side, the seventy-feet side. So really, the planning commission staff's concerns were that it being consistent with what was originally adopted, the location of this lot's likely closer to Iverville Street and having height limit that's closer to what exists currently. The planning commission was split on the matter. Those commissioners who were opposed to the application were opposed for the reasons recommended by staff. Other commissioners were supportive of the application. This is a property that has been vacant for many years, and they believe the additional height was necessary to return it to commerce. And so this comes to you with no recommendation from the planning commission.
Thank you, Senator. I had an opportunity to go through the building with Elliot. He's still in the back. Can you come up for a second? Can you talk to us about the, it being a landmark and what the interior of the building looks like in any significance?
The building is amazingly intact. It is a five-story hotel that sits at the front of the lot. There are, there's a large open portion of the lot that sits behind the original hotel and a small two-story service piece that seems to be pretty damaged. We had a nomination for study as a landmark, and that nomination was approved by the commission, bringing, with the stipulation that the landmark nomination be for the front five-story portion of the building. So this brings all exterior surfaces of the original building under the jurisdiction of the HDLC, which is different than our typical jurisdiction over what's visible from a public right-of-way. So that was a very, the, in terms of the state of the building, it's as if they just packed up and left. It's all completely still intact and pretty amazing. Does that answer your questions?
Yeah. Does anyone have any other questions, again, before I call the speakers? We have several cards. I'll give you side, I'll give you speaker two minutes. Calvin Lopez.
Good morning. My name is Calvin Lopez. I reside in East New Orleans. However, my grandparents lived in the heart of the quarter, had a business and a residence in the same location. This site is more aligned with the quarter than it is Canal Street, which is a hundred percent commercial. There's really no justification for the height increase. This city basically is on a fast track. It creates its own border wall, but it will not be seen through. To allow a significant height increase is like placing a flagpole in the center of your residence. To allow a significant height increase is like placing a flagpole in the center of your residence. It serves no purpose. It's out of place. Soon, the only sunlight anyone on Royal or Iverville will see is light reflected off the gray windows. Good night, Mr. [inaudible].
Thank you, sir. Susan Gilchrist. And then Erin Holmes.
Good morning. I'm Susan Gilchrist, President of French Quarter Citizens, six thirty-two North Rampart. We oppose the height waiver on this site. This is spot zoning, as was stated in the staff report, as stated clearly in the staff report. And we urge the council to consider the inevitable domino effect that a spot zoning will have on the rest of the quarter. This building can be adapted to another use and there are other options available for this building. Mr. Yeager, the developer, has always been a friend of the French Quarter and has always been one of the better actors in the French Quarter. And we strongly urge him to redevelop this property, including with the current seventy-foot height limit. We ask that you deny this request for waiver. Thank you.
And then Michael DePlauchet after this round.
Good morning, Counsel. My name is Erin Holmes. Here representing the Preservation Resource Center. And of course, we support the rehabilitation of all structures and this architectural and historical significant hotel certainly needs it. However, we feel that that is not a true issue before you today. This is a text application, essentially a height boundary designation shifted solely to expand the developmental rights of an individual. The master plan was intentionally created to prohibit this practice. The heights were not designed arbitrarily. The creation of the CZO, a four-year process involving countless hours of professional and public input, designated a thoughtful rationale for shifting the height limits down from Canal to Iverville. Just regarding this policy will, as noted in the staff report, ultimately negate the efforts to develop clear and predictable height standards in the CBD. Furthermore, when the DVD convened the stakeholder evaluation study of the height limits in two thousand seventeen, no property on the French Quarter side of Canal was suggested for reconsideration. Once this map change is approved, essentially a spot zone by text amendment, will just go into stop dozens of other property owners from asking for the same benefit. While all zoning allowances continue to shift and morph to suit individual developer needs. And this is a master plan consistency issue because it was the master plan that specified the CZO should encourage the gradual step down in height from the highest areas of Porters to Canal and onto the lower-rise character of Vucare. This text application and those that will undoubtedly follow will fundamentally disrupt that logic, further creating master plan inconsistency. Our interim executive director did attempt unsuccessfully to meet with Councilmember Ramsey to discuss our concerns further. We oppose this text amendment where we think the decision has citywide implications and merits at least a deferral for further consideration. Thank you.
Mr. DePlauchet.
Thank you, members of the council. I hope you've had an opportunity to read the staff report. I don't always agree with planning commission staff reports, but this one gets an Academy Award nomination. It's twenty pages long. And I think it correctly and succinctly points out all of the problems with this application. It mentions, for example, that this is a reflection of what used to be called zoning by provisos and exemptions. This reminds me also that the Litfield Board used to call this kind of application a zoning by surprise. And I think it is in the spirit of the manner in which we used to handle these kinds of land uses. This basically seeks to change the rules for one property owner. The planning commission report makes that very clear. Essentially moving the goalpost for this owner for no particular reason, by the way. This existing building is eighty-two feet tall, so it, and that, of course, is grandfathered above the seventy-foot limit. But at the same time, it also provides the developer for the opportunity to, if he chooses to, to develop the back part of this lot at the same height of eighty-two feet. So it's not working any particular hardship on the owner that I can see. The law provides, and a lot of us in my neighborhood and downtown spend a lot of time working on height limits for the entire downtown. And it, those recommendations were incorporated into the law and it represents essentially clear and predictable height limits. The planning commission report also mentions that. And it provides for this step down. To change the rules at this point in the game, according to the commission, and I completely agree, commission staff, I should say, represents preferential treatment and unfairly expands the development rights for this one particular owner. It's clearly inconsistent with the law. And in fact, it raises the question in my mind, and I think it's clear in my mind, that the council actually doesn't have the discretion to grant this application. Is that the two minutes?
Thank you, sir. Sandy Stokes and then Meg Gusteau.
Hi, I'm Sandra Stokes. I'm president of Louisiana Landmark Society. And we also would like to see this building put back into commerce. But again, I point to the staff report, which is a fabulous staff report, and it calls this out as spot zoning. In fact, the quote is, "Proposed text amendment is not based on any inherent problems with the current ordinance," or rather, "The purpose is solely to increase the development rights of one specific property." That's a problem. And besides being spot zoning, this sets a precedent. And we know there are a lot of projects right there in the quarter that are waiting for this to pass so that they can jump on this same idea that's being passed. We have to draw the line and the line is drawn. And we keep moving the line, then where's the line? You have so many other people waiting in the wing. This is a real problem. We need to hold our heights, especially in the French Quarter. This is sacrosanct for us, that the French Quarter heights not be abused. And we ask that you deny this zoning request. Thank you.
Good morning, councilmembers. Meg Gusteau here on behalf of Vucare Property Underholders and Associates. Of course, I agree with everything that the speakers have said, especially the part about wanting to see this building returned to commerce. I don't think there's any group that will disagree about that. It's been in a bad condition for a while, the result of neglect by the current owner. This may seem like a minor height issue, but it's not. It's a spot zoning. It's clearly outlined in the very well-written staff report. More than that, it's a violation of the master plan, which citizens voted to enshrine in our home rule charter. The point of the master plan, and especially of this section of the master plan, chapter fourteen, maybe not chapter thirteen, was to put certain changes in rules out of the reach of city council. Zoning and land regulation are why we have a French Quarter that we do, which is why we have a tourism industry. The rules that we had in place for decades have worked. They have proven their merit. The evidence is all around us. Please consider the long-term impact of this decision, particularly on the master plan, and we do request that you deny the application. Thank you.
Miles Granderson.
With your permission, Councilmember Ramsey, I think Miles and I would like to flip-flop just in terms of the integrity of our presentation.
What does flip-flop?
I'll go first, if that's okay.
You're wearing necks, but anyway.
Thank you, Councilmember Ramsey, members of the council. Mike Sherman, eight hundred Barone, on behalf of Mr. Yeager and MCC Real Estate, the developer of this project. I want to first point out, everyone in this room agrees on so much more than we disagree on. The wonder block of Royal is in terrible condition. It needs investment. It needs love. This building must be restored and historic preservation, and that's exactly what Mr. Yeager and the MCC team do. We'll have full HDLC, SHPO, and NPS approval. But this image tells us why we're here. Height on this block between Canal and Iverville is regulated by a map. And this property is right in the middle of that seventy to one hundred twenty-foot height. If you follow the line from the river towards the property and just keep going straight, we should be at a hundred and twenty feet already. If you come from Rampart, it hits the property in the dead center. I think as Mr. Crowe from CPC staff just pointed out, there's a decision to make. It can go either way. We started this process by listening to the neighbors. We met with the folks from VC Cora and French Quarter Citizens and PRC and Landmarks, who are great advocates for the quarter. And we agreed, we want a solution that is fully in line with the master plan and fully in line with the CZO. We would expect nothing less. And this plan does that. The way this CZO and master plan address this property, you start at fifty feet in the Vucare in Iverville, you angle up to the hundred and twenty feet, and we meet that criteria. So I can proudly stand before you and say that this solution at a hundred and twenty feet, which is eighty feet less than the window across the street, less than the hundred and sixty-eight foot Crown Plaza behind us, this solution is fully in line with the master plan and that's why we brought it before you today. And we ask for your support to do a great thing for the Vucare, to get that one hundred block of Royal, that key gateway, in a great position. And proud to be here on behalf of the MCC team trying to do that.
Miles.
Miles Granderson, eight hundred Barone, here on behalf of the developer. I have three points to expand on what Mr. Sherman just said. If you look to the left, look to the right, look around this property from a contextual standpoint, you're going to see two hundred and six feet at the window. You're going to see a hundred and seventy-five feet at the Crown Plaza. You're going to see mostly surrounded by the hundred and twenty-foot zone, which includes the window and the Crown Plaza. There are still lots running Royal that buffer this line as you go towards Iverville. So the request respects the notion that the height will drop down from one twenty to one seventy as you get towards Iverville. If you'd like to know again, as Mr. Crowe noted, that it is eighty-one feet right now. So it is not a full request to go from seventy to one twenty, but from eighty-one to one twenty. In the past, there have been requests as high as two hundred and sixty-eight feet on this site. The council approved one ninety in the past. And this is an attempt to make it work at one twenty, which is consistent. And I do want to reemphasize just what Mr. Sherman said and to note on what some other folks said as they came up here. If you look at the line, how it's drawn, and as was shown in that, in that figure, the line, the best-fit line going through there, clearly encompasses property within the hundred and twenty-foot zone. If you look at it right here, you almost, you had to jump down to not include this property. So if you're looking at it fresh, with fresh eyes, in every way possible, it actually makes more sense for this property to have been included originally within the hundred and twenty-foot zone. So to the extent it's spot zoning, it had to maybe originally be spot zoned out of the hundred and twenty-foot zone. And for that reason, I think you can also note that it doesn't set any dangerous precedent because there are probably not a lot of properties that fit that definition.
Thank you. Jill Yeager. Brian Drew. And then I have Mary Burgess.
Hi, my name's Mary Grace Burgess and here as an architect on behalf of the development team and project. I'd like to put in a few pieces of information relative to the design itself. First, we're actually proposing to renovate their storage structure and the addition is behind that structure. So the addition that we're asking for the height range is not really visible from the street front. Second, the restoration of the Cosmopolitan Hotel, which dates back to the eighteen nineties, cannot be developed without a full review and extensive approval process from a few, from a few parties, including a full CBD HDLC review. And as a historic tax credit project under the first developer, a full SHPO and NPS review would also be required. Therefore, an appropriate storage renovation under all of those reviews is a priority. One of the staff's concerns that the height increase would compromise the architectural integrity of this existing building, but this increase would do the opposite. It would actually prompt and allow development on a very prominent block of French Quarter. In addition, protecting the integrity of the historic architecture is a must when dealing with historic tax credits and is something that our development team values, especially on all of our projects. This means no destruction, built over or compromising the original structure will be part of the proposal.
Madam Chairman, I have one question. What's the cost of this development? I mean, your projected costs?
Certainly exceeding thirty million, probably thirty-five million, I'm guessing.
Mr. Drew.
Good morning, City Council. My name is Brian Drew. I'm here at the French Quarter and also the president of the French Quarter Advocates, which represent over a hundred people in business and residents in the neighborhood. We too were able to give a tour of the facility and saw that the old hotel versus the vacant lot sits behind it. We too thought it was a fantastic building and to be able to preserve that hotel and put it back into commerce, it would be fantastic for the city and for the French Quarter as well. Because everyone in this room who has been in the one hundred block of Royal Street knows it's accessible. It harbors criminals. When we, the day that we were given the tour, there was illicit behavior going on in front of this hotel, what wants to be a hotel. When I say illicit, very bad. And as we came out, I was propositioned by a prostitute leaving the facility. So this recommendation to extend the height to a hundred and twenty feet so it can be compatible with, to be feasible, to make money, and that's what we're here for, but to preserve that building should be a preservationist's daydream come true. So as a representative of the French Quarter Advocates and also as a resident of the French Quarter, I ask that you please approve this so we can get this matter going, so we can get this building restored to its former glory, and so we can clean up with the one hundred block of Royal Street. Thank you very much.
Peter Amad. Did I pronounce it correctly?
Close enough.
Close enough. Tell me.
It's Peter Amad.
Amad.
Peter Amad. My address is thirty-three thirty North Cosmay. I'm here on behalf of the purchaser and developer of this property. What is important here and what we have heard so far is the need to put this property back into commerce. The block is blighted. A lot of vacancy in this area of order. But one thing that we need to all know and understand is the feasibility of the project itself. It's eligible for historic tax credits, which make it feasible, but at the same time, by disrenovating this building as is, you cannot make any money due to the extensive nature of the renovations itself. So how do you remedy that? By building the tower at the back, you can generate enough revenue to pay for the improvements. The previous, some of the previous requests for this were upward near two hundred and sixty feet, a hundred and ninety feet. But interestingly enough, that much new construction in this town, at this time, doesn't work either. You can't pay for the new construction. So the sweet spot is right around a hundred and twenty feet, provides enough rooms to not only pay for the back portion, but to push forward with the redevelopment of the front part. The front part, as you well know, would fall into a historical uses hotel. Were good stewards, as they said before, and good neighbors in the French Quarter with over two thousand and up of hotel rooms, apartments, and single-family homes, not only in the French Quarter, but CBD and the warehouse district. So we just ask for your support of this to not only put a hotel, a historic property, back into commerce, but also to help to eliminate vacancy, blight, some crime in the area, and to make New Orleans what we all know it should be. So, thank you.
There have been many attempts to rehabilitate this building. The initial proposal...
A seat to my candidate.
You flip-flop with me? The initial proposal was in twenty sixteen to renovate the existing building and to add a tower in the rear portion with a height of two hundred and sixty-eight feet. This is not the first time the proposal has come to the planning commission and the council and has been granted in the past. In two thousand and five, the council approved an eighty-five-foot waiver for a height of one hundred and seventy-three feet. In two thousand and seven, the council approved a height waiver to allow up to two hundred and fifty-nine feet. However, due to market and environmental conditions, the owner was not able to proceed until now. I understand that the building will be sold and it will be a new owner and developer. The current text amendment would allow the increase to one hundred and twenty feet. I don't agree with the analysis of the planning commission that this is a spot zone. I think that term has been loosely used, particularly in this case. This is not the singling out of a small parcel for classification different from that of the surrounding property. The commission itself says that this is located on the boundary. And it's just a term that it's slightly closer to Iverville. So I think the nature of zoning allows us to accommodate this, to preserve this building. I'm particularly excited. It really truly is a beautiful structure on the inside. And I'm very excited about the commitment to maintain so much of the interior and the original. And, um, I'm very excited about the commitment to maintain so much of the interior and the original look. Um, a spot zone usually refers when an island of one parcel of land is relegated, relegated to another zoning classification in a large area of property, which is zoned in another classification. In this case, the property is adjacent to the zoning district that allows one hundred and twenty feet. The request is to move the line slightly to incorporate the whole square and lot, which previously was down the midline of the property. And it has consistently been the policy to not bifurcate properties. This building and the block are in desperate need of renovation. With the setback of the tower, a height of one hundred and twenty feet would not impact the character of the neighborhood and not be a detriment to the surrounding properties. Uh, I don't think it is reasonable to be against height for the sake of being against height without looking at the totality of the circumstances. And I believe that in fact, the renovation will improve the block, will improve the surrounding properties. And so, um, I'm going to, uh, and before I do that, uh, the lady from PRC who said they were not granted a meeting with me, the meeting came late yesterday afternoon. So PRC, if I can say nothing else, you're consistent in your behavior. Um, at this time, I'm going to make a motion to approve the requested tax amendment, if there are no other questions for my panel.
Senator, can you comment?
Yes, sir.
Um, I would say, I mean, there are absolutely, um, things, entities, and developments that the quarter has to be protected from, absolutely. This is one of the reasons why I authored and suggested, uh, protecting the French Quarter from short-term rental. There are a number of developers that I think have no, um, business doing work on historic properties. When I, on my drive from my place in the corner to City Hall, it was an absolutely phenomenal ride every morning, every evening home, until I hit this block. There's nobody in this room that's gonna say that block is not atrocious. I mean, it is, the least of things is, 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 is being propositioned. It is, it smells bad, it looks bad, um. I would never want a, a local or a tourist to have to spend any time on that block the way it is right now. And, um, to suggest that we're going to wait to reclaim that part of it is, um, I don't think is, is, is a good idea. Um, I will say that, uh, with regards to a bright line on this particular decision of the city council, I don't think it is a bright line. If it's described as a gray area, I think that the gray area inures to height in this particular area, in this unique instance. All that being said, that's a judgment call, no matter how you shape it up. I do, however, trust this developer, um, based upon his work in the past. Mr. Yeager has shown a true commitment to historical architectural integrity in all of his work that I've seen. I trust his commitment to that work in the French Quarter because I've seen it. I, I trust his commitment to a clean job in construction site during renovation, which is another huge problem, uh, with work in, in areas like the quarter and downtown, allowing mobility of people to be able to get around while work is being done. And every site that I've seen, uh, him work at, there is a commitment to that. So the decision has to be made. Leaving this area in its current condition is, should not be an option for this council. Uh, the fact that we have someone who has shown a true commitment to preservation and historical integrity, I think is, is, is a, speaks volumes about how I'll be voting today. If this were, if this were an unknown commodity, an unknown developer from out of town who did not, um, who had not proven his commitment to what's important to the city of New Orleans or what's important to the quarter, I might be voting differently, but that's not the case today.
I have to say, when I read this report, I was surprised at how, uh, how hard the planner obviously worked to get to the answer no. In many of the sections, there are absolute factual inaccuracies that are contained in the report. And this is one of those times where reasonable men could differ. However, the strident and, um, the, the strident approach and the way that this is written to present to the council and first to the, the planning commission that there isn't an argument for this development to be, number one, consistent with the master plan, and, number two, um, good use of our judgment within the box that we are given. I don't know what is going on at times with the city planning commission when you are missing some of the most fundamental points. When you, on page sixteen, the proposed amendment promotes the public health, safety, and welfare of the city. No discussion of landmark status, no discussion about the difficulty of the block, no discussion about the fact that this is going to be a, the height that is requested is a completely separate building. It is not the, um, the bastardization of a historic building by adding a camelback or by adding some kind of addition to it. I, I don't understand why the report is written the way it is. With regard to, um, why I am, can easily make this decision today. There is an inherent problem with the current ordinance, which was, which was the decision as to whether or not to include a property that is close to the midpoint of the square. That is a judgment call. The staff report makes it seem like it's not a judgment call, but it is. The staff made a decision to exclude this property, and we need to reexamine it. Now, someone spoke about the DDD height study. I certainly wish that the DDD height study had been, had been expanded to include other parts of the city. However, I had to go raise money for that. I couldn't go into, far into the quarter. So some of these parcels were not reexamined, and they absolutely should be. This step-down from the Crown Plaza to the historic building, which will remain exactly the same on the outside, and is protected by landmark status, shows a perfect angle of a step-down, and there will be no, um, someone said that there would be a, a blocking of, of sight. It will be almost impossible to see this new building, and it certainly won't cast any shadows. There was also a concern about whether or not other properties will ask for the line to be drawn differently. Clearly, there are some properties on the midpoint that would reasonably argue that the border between the two height zones should be redrawn, and we should probably start that exercise in the near future. But on lots that are not even close to the midpoint of the square, those are going to be easy to deny. This is a matter of three feet. Three feet made the decision here. If we were talking about a much larger area, obviously, that would, would not be a gray area, and it would allow us to deny that without any, um, concern. And again, stepping down the height from Canal Street to Otterville is exactly what this does. It allows the development that is compatible with the historic structure while preserving the architectural integrity of the architecturally significant historic structure with the use of tax credits and the coverage by, um, HDLC. And it also encourages the conservation and redevelopment of historic places and buildings in the downtown area. I don't see that this is a close call.
One other.
Councilmember?
You know, I've said a number of times that, that at the end of the day, we vote on things, and, and, and we've heard a lot of arguments, and some people think if we vote the same way, we all agree with the arguments that were given, and that, that really is not the case. We, we just voted to waive a, uh, a, a penalty for demolish, uh, demolishing a building without a permit. And I don't know what other people had in mind. I voted for it because I think it was in the best interest of the long-term development of the city. I think that people in that situation need to be able to get their project done so we can collect taxes from them in the future, so that other people can look at it and say, it's easy to do business in the city of New Orleans, and this is a place where I want to invest my money, and this is a place where I want to build. I, I may be wrong on, on, on the numbers, but, uh, uh, when I just think about, um, the blighted property we have here now and the tax dollars we're gonna collect after they build this thirty-two-million-dollar business, I, I start along the path of saying, we need to see if this can be done consistent with the rules. I trust those who know the rules a lot better than I do, and, uh, uh, I, I give credit both to Councilman, um, Head and Williams in paying more attention to those details than I do. But, but we have some that is consistent with the rules, and the question we really have is, do we need a piece of land vacant? Because all those people say, we really think it ought to be developed at some point. No one walked up and said, "I have someone with the money to do some other development tomorrow morning." We have someone apparently with the money, I think. Uh, we've been wrong about that before, but we think we have someone with the money to do development today. And in a year or so, we start collecting taxes on it. In a year or so, it won't be something that Councilman Williams is ashamed to let tourists see. It'll be something that may bring more tourists to the city. I look around at cities that are not as well situated as we are, do not have all the natural advantages we have, that seem to be booming in a way that we don't boom. And I struggle with, why is that? And I think one of the reasons is, we turn down too many good projects in this city, which means not only do we lose that project, we lose all the other projects that may look at that project and say, hey, that was a good idea, I can make some money too. That's why I'm gonna vote for this. The same reason I voted for the young man who, who, who apparently had part of his building demolished without a permit, because I think it is in the long-term best interest of the city to do so. Thank you.
Well, I agree with all of the comments made by my colleagues, and I would just reiterate that, one, this is not a spot zone. Two, it is not in conflict with the master plan. Thank you, I've made a motion, um, to approve the...
I sent the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Thank you. Congratulations.
At the bottom of the page, zoning docket one oh nine seventeen has been deferred to February twenty-second. On top of page twenty-five, zoning docket one ten seventeen has been deferred to February twenty-second. Zoning docket one thirteen seventeen, city council motion M seventeen five twenty-eight, requesting a text amendment to the comprehensive zoning ordinance to delete standards for maximum lot coverage where currently applied in the site design standards of the bulk and yard tables of Article eight, rule open space districts, table eight dash two, Article nine, historic core neighborhood residential district, historic marinated may-by-water district, table nine two, Article ten, historic core neighborhood non-residential district, historic marinated may-by-water district, table ten dash two, Article eleven, historic urban residential districts, table eleven dash two, Article twelve, historic urban non-residential districts, table twelve dash two, Article thirteen, Article fourteen, suburban neighborhood non-residential districts, table fourteen dash two, Article fifteen, commercial center and institutional campus district, table fifteen dash two, and Article sixteen, center for industry districts, table sixteen dash two, and to add standards for minimum permeable open space and title permeable standards, bulk and yard regulations, and to add site design standards to Article nine, section nine point three, and Article ten, section ten point three, respectively, to read as follows. C, open space all required, open space shall be permeable. D, open space all required, open space shall be permeable citywide. The recommendation of the city planning commission be for approval. Well, on the bottom of page twenty-five, zoning docket one thirteen seventeen.
Is this the water?
So, so what this is, is an amendment to the zoning ordinance that, I'll just, I'll just start by saying this fits in as a piece of the puzzle in the city's approach to managing stormwater, by saying that even if you're not a big project that has to have a stormwater management plan in your house or a small business, new construction, it ensures that there is permeable open space that captures rainwater and prevents it often flowing onto the street. So it works as part of the city's larger stormwater management strategy. Um, specifically, what this does is it takes an interim zoning district that went into effect in late twenty fifteen, almost as soon as the new zoning ordinance went into effect, and it makes it permanent, and it approves upon it. So the IZDA exists in the first place because the regulations initially said a house, a bit, uh, commercial development has to have a certain amount of open space, but it didn't say it has to be permeable, it could be completely concreted over, and so water would just shoot flow into the street rather than, than being to work it with the ground. So based on that, interim zoning district was put into place that has permeability requirements built into the zoning ordinance. In the two years that, that has been in effect, um, we've noticed some issues with it, it needs to be fine-tuned to respond to the historic core neighborhoods, so marinated may-by-water. But overall, it's, it's a good thing, and so this essentially makes the regulations permanent and makes the clarification of refining the definitions of permeable open space and permeable surface, permeable paving, and reinstating the open space requirements in the historic core residential neighborhoods, while also requiring that part of this space be permeable in those neighborhoods. And so based on this, the planning commission recommends approval.
I just wanna thank the stormwater management working group that really labored over this and making sure that we're kind of finding this, the minimum permeable open space that is consistent with the master plan.
This was, um, the subject of a lot of time and effort, um, put in at the staff level, so I thank you for all of you that did that. I mean, for approval?
Second.
It was second by Councilmember Cantrell. All in favor, say aye. Uh, D. May's, uh, seven oh, the motion passes.
On top of page twenty-six, all matters, zoning docket one sixteen seventeen has been deferred to February twenty-second. Zoning docket one seventeen seventeen has been deferred to February twenty-second. On top of page twenty-seven, zoning docket one eighteen, city council motion M seventeen five forty-two, requesting for a text amendment to the comprehensive zoning ordinance to remove public transit wait station as defined use and its regulation in a comprehensive zoning ordinance citywide. The recommendation of the city planning commission be for modified approval.
Thank you, Madam President, and Mr. Crowe.
So this is a zoning amendment that would take bus shelters out of the zoning ordinance. Um, bus shelters like light posts, benches, other street furniture improvements in the right-of-way aren't something that's really appropriately regulated through zoning, zoning is intended for development on private property, not for public infrastructure. And so currently, to develop a bus shelter, there's a conditional use process in almost all the city that's a burdensome process that is inappropriate for a bus shelter, which is basically the same thing, no matter where you put it. Um, and so given that, uh, that zoning regulation of that's, the bus shelters, and it's inappropriate, the staff is supportive of the, or rather, the planning commission is supportive of the proposal overall. The only exception is that in occasional instances where you've got transportation-oriented development, it might make sense for a developer to have an onsite, um, public transit station that's part of the larger development, particularly in the CBD. So if you've got onsite development, there's still going to be for some regulations within the zoning ordinance, but the vast majority of, of bus shelters and other transit wait stations don't belong in the zoning ordinance, and this will accomplish that. So the planning commission recommends modified approval of this.
Thank you, Mr. Crowe. Is there a comment from the administration? Well, wait, Mr. Monster, this is definitely a move in the right direction. We've been working on it the last few years for the administration to get a more efficient bus shelter procedure, uh, throughout the city, so it wouldn't be burdensome for bus shelters to have to go through, uh, the process for each and every bus shelter. Mr. Monster.
Thank you, Councilman. Exactly as you said, exactly as Mr. Crowell said. This will help the RTA's shelter vendor get these things placed throughout the city. Right now, we have about two hundred shelters across the city with about two thousand bus stops. So this will greatly enhance the ability to provide bus stops, greatly enhance the ability to provide revenue based on ads, advertising shelters, to pay for those that shouldn't have ads. And what we're doing is creating a code-based approval process rather than a zoning ordinance-based approval process that mirrors what we did for the sidewalk use regulations that were adopted a couple of months ago.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson, I will go move to Public comment.
Good afternoon. I'm Anderson with Bryan, New Orleans. Just wanted to say we fully support the recommendations from the CMT, the CBT, to remove transit wait stations from the CPO. Currently, the RTA must get a conditional use permit for every single new bus shelter and bench. This is unnecessary and burdensome process. It takes up much of the city's and RTA's time. It's also very expensive at twelve hundred dollars per permit, per stop. So because of these hurdles, basically, the RTA's is stop putting any bus shelters. This has a direct and negative impact on our transit riders who not only experience long wait times in between transfers, but are also, of course, in New Orleans weather, routinely exposed to torrential downpours and extreme heat. So this will help simplify and streamline the approval process, make it much easier to install the needed transit shelters and seating that our residents and all transit riders deserve. So this is a big win for riders. And we also support the recommendations to update the code, the city code, to supply the current community process and ensure that there is a clear set of guidelines for the bus shelters and benches. Designs of shelters and benches will be pre-approved to eliminate an expensive and time-consuming process. And advertising shelters will be kept to commercial areas and major state highways. This wants your designs to vary depending on the neighborhood to make sure we are sensitive in historic context and keep advertisements out of wide residential neighborhoods. Again, we will continue to support the RTA and the CBT in this process to make it easier to install this much-needed transit infrastructure for safe, comfortable waiting areas for all riders. And especially like to thank you, Councilmember Bursette, for taking this issue forward and your leadership on this and for the council's consideration on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, I will move adoption of Motion M-17542. Second. Second by Councilmember Williams. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Our ayes have it. Motion approved. Zoning.
We have zoning docket 218 has been deferred to February twenty-second. Zoning docket 418 has been deferred to February twenty-second. On top of page twenty-eight, All Matters, zoning docket 618 has been deferred to February twenty-second. Zoning docket 718 has been deferred to February twenty-second. On the bottom of page twenty-nine, All Matters, zoning docket 2, zoning docket 818 has been deferred to February twenty-second. Zoning docket 918 has been deferred to February twenty-second. On page thirty, All Matters, ordinance calendar number twenty-nine thousand seven sixty has been deferred to April fifth. Ordinance calendar number thirty thousand seven forty has been deferred to March eighth. On top of page thirty-one, All Matters, ordinance calendar number thirty-one thousand eight oh seven is deferred to February twenty-second. Ordinance calendar number thirty-one thousand eight forty-five has been deferred to February twenty-second. Ordinance calendar number thirty-one thousand nine oh one has been deferred to February twenty-second. We're now on top of page thirty-two. Ordinance calendar number thirty-two thousand one thirty-two, by Councilmember Gitter by request, and ordinance revoking the street dedication and authorizing the sale at public auction for a minimal price to be set by appraisal of a parcel of ground with all improvements and purposes designated as a portion of South Negro Street adjacent to Lot BG Square 134, six municipal district, City of New Orleans, Aldis Parish, Louisiana, South Negro Street parcel, which is no longer needed for public purposes and otherwise to provide respect thereto.
Thank you. I move approval. And second, this is a dead-end street area behind University Village on Clayburn Avenue, South Negro. And it's gonna... This is gonna allow for the sale of a piece of sidewalk that's no longer needed for a public purpose on that dead-end street. And there are no exceptions for many neighbors. So if there are no questions, please vote your machines.
Aye.
I'm still saying that. I'm still saying that. All right. Any noes?
Jefferson.
I'm gonna go.
Yeah. Yes, yes. Great. Okay. Thank you.
We have ordinance calendar number thirty-two thousand one thirty-seven has been deferred to February twenty-second. Ordinance calendar number thirty-two thousand one thirty-eight has been deferred to March eighth. We're now on top of page thirty-three. Ordinance calendar number thirty-two thousand one forty-one, by Councilmember Williams by request, and ordinance to amend and reordain Section 30-63P of the Code of the City of New Orleans relative to wireless communication franchises to establish purpose and fees for the installation or erection of wireless communication equipment devices or poles, and to otherwise provide respect thereto.
I will move adoption. Second by Councilmember Gray. All in favor? Aye. Ayes have it. No opposed.
We have ordinance calendar number thirty-two thousand one forty-two by Councilmember Ramsey. We have ordinance calendar... I mean, an ordinance to temporarily waive certain fees, permits, certain fees, permit fees and requirements within and around the Armstrong Park located within the nine-hundred block of North Rampart Street, New Orleans, Louisiana, in conjunction with Moja, twenty-sixth celebration of the African-American child event on Saturday, May twelfth, twenty eighteen. To specify the duration and boundaries of said waiver and to provide otherwise with respect thereto.
I move adoption. Second by... All in favor?
Aye.
At the bottom of the page, we have ordinance calendar number thirty-two thousand one forty-three by Councilmember Cantrell and Councilmember Williams, and ordinance to temporarily waive certain fees, permit fees and requirements within and around the Lyons Center Recreation Center Gym located within the six-hundred block of Louisiana Avenue, New Orleans, Louisiana, and the Rosenwall Recreation Center Gym located within the eleven-hundred block of South Broad Street, New Orleans, Louisiana, in conjunction with the Central City Partnerships, Sixth Annual Elijah Burma Junior Alumni Classic Event on Saturday, January thirteenth, twenty eighteen. To specify the duration and boundaries of said waiver and to provide otherwise with respect thereto.
I will move adoption. Second by Councilmember Gray. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Here, none. That matter passes unanimously.
We're now on top of page thirty-four. We have ordinance calendar number thirty-two thousand one forty-eight by Councilmember Gitter, and ordinance to amend and reordain Section 102-1 of the Code of the City of New Orleans relative to juvenile warning notices and juvenile summons and definitions thereof to clarify warnings and are verbal and to provide otherwise with respect thereto.
I move to approve. Okay. We need to move in second. And I'll state that the purpose of this amendment is to allow that the juvenile warning notice that is given by the police as an alternative to arresting the youth or bringing them to the youth study center can be an oral... It can be an oral warning. And we have a card from Mr. Marty, George Marty.
George Marty.
Who did the second? I'm sorry.
I asked you to do the seventh.
Neighborhood unity emerged. Overall, we think this is a good step. But our main concern is with the problem of the school and prison pipeline. We believe, also believe that it is a post-Cate conspiracy to disenfranchise black children in competition with white students of the same age group. And why we say this is because of the numbers of suspensions and expulsions that occur in these situations. We think that the numbers are too high. When you compare these numbers, of suspensions, dropouts and subsequent arrests, we see a fine line that's being drawn there in terms of rates. And it can't be a matter of ability. So what we need to look at is the whole process. The process of privatization, charters. They have to be evaluated in terms of their success. We also have to look at this testing instead of, you know, the testing programs. Because we don't think they work either. We need viable education curriculum instead of testing. And also, we need to substitute the reading clinics as a... As lack of reading clinics in schools that contribute to the discipline problems that these kids have with failures. And also, we need to answer dirty recreational facilities in the city. We need to rebuild Lincoln Beach and have some of these recreational facilities for kids to... For something, to give them something to do. And we need to end the use of youth center, or youth study centers, which I think are prison schools that have to be eliminated. All these things point to a concerted disproportionate and unequal playing field, which leads directly to the crime and prison populations. If we're interested in solving these problems of education, crime, we need to look at these matters before capital and, you know, give the kids what they need to be successful in school so we won't have the discipline problems at the beginning. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marty. All right. If there are no other questions or comments, please say whether you are a yea or a nay.
I am a yea.
Can you do a second? Oh, no. We got a second. Yes. That's what I was gonna say. Thank you.
We have ordinance calendar number thirty-two thousand one fifty-six by Councilmember Bursette by request, and ordinance to authorize the mayor of the City of New Orleans to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement among the City of New Orleans, the New Orks Recreation Development Commission, and Transitional Spaces to allow and facilitate the coordination of programs and activities conducted at Parasite Skate Park as more fully set forth in a cooperative endeavor agreement for attached here to a near port here and otherwise to provide the respect thereto.
Thank you, Madam Furth. We have the spirits from the administration. Can you express to us what Transitional Spaces has done in recent years and what this ordinance does?
Right. So Transitional Spaces has had a CEAs for the previous three years. This is another three-year CEAs. In the last three years, they built the skate park into ramps, infrastructure landscaping, and have maintained the skate park, moving graffiti, working with Department of Color Works in the north to grass cut light, lighting facilities. And over the next three years, they're going to make necessary repairs as a result of wear and tear from skateboarding, as well as doing additional safety features to improve sight lines. So just make sure kids have a safe place to skate.
Do you want any new questions, Will?
I have one to comment. First of all, they are doing a good job. And the truth of the matter is, I agree with Mr. Marty that we need to work as hard as we can to give our kids as much as we can and more. But I really think everyone ought to just drive around and see what we are in fact making available today as compared to what we made available in the good old days, twenty, thirty years ago. Right now, nigh. There's more programs going on and more facilities operating than they ever had in this city. And the truth is, if we have a problem, it's convincing our kids to take advantage of what's there. It's too often that you go to a beautiful facility that is empty. And that is beginning to be one of our problems as opposed to not enough there.
Thank you. Councilmember Gray. Does that move adoption? Second by Councilmember Gray. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None. Ayes have it. Thank you.
We have substitute motion line over M-17178 has been deferred to April fifth. At the top of the page, on page thirty-five, we have resolution line over R-17383 has been deferred to February fifth. We have motion M-1847 by Councilmember Gray waiving the neighborhood participation program requirements and any required fees relative to City Council Motion M-17629 regarding a zoning change from an SRS, single-family residential district to a C1 general commercial district on lots H and K, bounded generally by Shepherd to a highway, Old Spanish Trail, Drew Avenue, Papania Drive, Nottingham Drive, and Prentice Avenue and the third municipal district, municipal address eleven zero three three, Shepherd to a highway.
This is a matter that actually, we passed the ordinance on twelve fourteen. Within the ordinance that we passed on fourteen, we neglected to add the provisions that waive neighborhood participation program requirements and required fees. And incidentally, we waived those things because we concluded on advice of the city staff that the change... There was a change on this originally from C1 to SRS. And that change was done without appropriate notice and probably without... It wasn't the appropriate thing to do consistently with the master plan. So we're really correcting an error. We tried to correct it on twelve fourteen, but we left out a provision. We're doing it today, putting those provisions in, naming the waiver of the neighborhood participation program requirements and the fees. I move adoption. Being seconded by Councilman Bursette. All those in favor, let me know. Let's say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Ayes have it. Seven zeros. Six zero.
We have resolution R-1848 by Councilmember Bursette. A resolution calling a special election in the Lakewood subdivision improvement district for November sixth, twenty eighteen.
I move adoption.
Seven.
Second by Councilmember Gray. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Aye. Ayes have it.
Councilmembers, we need to suspend the rules to go to ordinances on first reading.
Yes, ma'am. Move to suspend the rules.
I second that motion.
Second vigorously by Councilmember Gray. All in favor? Any opposed? unanimous?
Orders is on first reading. Orders calendar number thirty-two thousand one sixty-three by Councilmembers Head, Bursette, Cantrell, Gitter and Williams by request, and ordinance to amend ordinance number twenty-seven thousand six ten, MCS, as amended, entitled and ordinance providing operating budget of revenues for the City of New Orleans for the year twenty eighteen to carry all and appropriate funds from intergovernmental transfers fund balance to the Department of Law for outstanding settlements and judgments. Orders calendar number thirty-two thousand one sixty-four by Councilmembers Head, Bursette, Cantrell, Gitter and Williams by request, and ordinance to amend ordinance number twenty-seven thousand sixteen, MCS, as amended, entitled and ordinance providing operating budget of expenses for the City of New Orleans for the year twenty eighteen to carry all and appropriate funds from intergovernmental transfers fund balance to the Department of Law for outstanding settlements and judgments. Orders calendar number thirty-two thousand one sixty-five by Councilmembers Head, Bursette, Cantrell, Gitter and Williams by request. of and otherwise provide respect thereto. Ordinance calendar number thirty-two thousand one seventy-six by Councilmember Ramsey. An ordinance to effect a zoning change from the H R M Historic Marionie Tremé by Water Residential District to a Historic Marionie Tremé by Water Commercial District on square six twenty-two dot fifteen or lot ten and eleven in the Third Municipal District bonded by Enette, North Robinson, St. Anthony, and North Villarri Streets. Municipal address fourteen forty-three Enette Street and otherwise to provide respect thereto, zoning docket number one eleven seventeen. Ordinance calendar number thirty-two thousand one seventy-seven by Councilmembers Ramsey and Williams by request. An ordinance to provide for the establishment of conditional use of a permit of art in a historic residential district and arts and cultural diversity over the district and an enhancement corridor design over the district on square three sixty-three dot C in the Third Municipal District bonded by St. Paul Avenue and Floyd, North Rampart, and Monty Hughes Streets. Municipal addresses thirty forty-two through thirty forty-four St. Paul Avenue and otherwise to provide respect thereto, zoning docket number one eighteen seventeen. Ordinance calendar number thirty-two thousand one seventy-eight by Councilmembers Williams Head, Gitter, and Ramsey and Brissette by request. An ordinance to ordain Division forty-one of Article three, Chapter seventy of the Code of the City of New Orleans to establish appropriate fees in lieu of rate for properties that do not physically comply with the Stonewall Code of the City of New Orleans and otherwise to provide respect thereto. Ordinance calendar number thirty-two thousand one seventy-nine by Councilmembers Williams Head, Gitter, and Ramsey and Brissette by request. An ordinance to ordain Section two dash eleven oh five of the Code of the City of New Orleans to establish appropriate fees in lieu of rate for properties that do not physically comply with the Stonewall Code of the City of New Orleans and otherwise to provide respect thereto. Ordinance calendar number thirty-two thousand one eighty by Councilmembers Williams Head, Gitter, and Ramsey and Brissette by request. An ordinance to amend and reordain Section twenty-six dash fifteen fifteen of the Code of the City of New Orleans relative to the City of New Orleans Amendment to the adopted International Building Code twenty-fifteen edition to establish therein the Stonewall Code of the City of New Orleans, which includes permitting and supplemental requirements, fees, plan review, and various standards relative thereto and otherwise to provide respect thereto. Ordinance calendar number thirty-two thousand one eighty-one by Councilmember Ramsey. An ordinance to direct the Department of Sanitation to conduct recycling and composting workshops to amend and ordain Chapter six, Article two, title and section six dash thirty-one related to the definition and application of administrative procedures, application to the solid waste, Section one thirty-eight dash one, relative to the responsibility for the solid waste disposal, to include recycling and composting, Section one thirty-eight dash two, relative to the definitions related to waste management, recycling and composting, and to ordain Order three seven, Section one thirty-eight dash one oh six to one thirty-eight dash two hundred of the Code of the City of New Orleans relative to the waste reduction, composting, and recycling requirements and otherwise to provide respect thereto. Ordinance calendar number thirty-two thousand one eighty-two by Councilmember Cantrell. An ordinance to provide for a conditioning use to permit a reception facility greater than five thousand square feet employed area in a historic urban neighborhood business district, carried preservation corridor design over the district in the Magazine Street use restriction over the district, and position of ordinance number fifteen thousand seven fifty-nine, M C S, zoning docket six ninety-three, on square one fifty, lot S V E in the First Municipal District bonded by Magazine Street, Gray Street, Cam Street, and Orange Street. Municipal address one eleven, Orange Street, and otherwise to provide respect thereto. Ordinance calendar number thirty-two thousand one eighty-three by Councilmember Head. An ordinance to amend and reordain Section two dash six of the Code of the City of New Orleans relative to the requirements of the official journal of New Orleans, the annual contract for the publication of the official journal, the auxiliary official journal, additional official publication, and the responsibilities of the clerical counsel's office to respect to the official journal and otherwise to provide respect thereto. That concludes all the ordinances on first reading.
Move for approval? Seconded by Councilmember Ramsey. All in favor? Aye. Seven ayes, no nays. We are adjourned. Thanks. Six, six. Councilmember six, seven. The objections?